Thank you so much. So this is the Tuesday, March 23 COVID-19 Response Committee. I'm Chairman Jesse Letterman. And we are joined on the Zoom today by Counselor Melvin Edwards, Counselor Tim Allen, Vice President Whitfield, and Counselor Hurst. We're also joined by our Deputy CFO Lindsay Hackett and our Budget Director Melanie Akobi. And we are recording for the purposes of Focus Springfield, and that will be posted later on, on the Focus Springfield Municipal Meetings YouTube page. So the purpose of today's meeting is just to receive an update from the Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, as we have in the past. And I know there's been several developments with localized vaccine distribution, which are fantastic. We also have the finance team here, so actually maybe we can follow up on some of what we had discussed a couple of weeks ago, see if there's any new developments with the American Rescue Plan or any other finance questions. So we'll begin with Commissioner Colton Harris. Commissioner, the floor is yours. Commissioner, I'm sorry, I think you're still muted.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to give a brief update, then I will answer questions that anyone has. Again, the data that I presented yesterday is up on the city's website. Please take the opportunity to look at it. It also, all of the data that we present is archived there. So you can go back and also look at our data. So the number of cases in the city right now, 18,473. Last week, we added 310. It was down 16 cases from the previous week. As I'm sure you know, Springfield is a yellow city now, which is great news for us, and hopefully we continue to stay there. The cases at the end of last week were very concerning because they were in the 40s, 60s, and 70s. However, earlier that week, it was lower. And so we came in with a good average, but absolutely, we are concerned. I have been told by the state DPH that they have found the new variant in the city of Springfield. They are following three cases. And so what we know right now is that while it's three cases that they have been able to isolate, there were probably more cases of the new variant. The variant that they found is the UK variant, and so they are tracking that. So they will update me as information becomes available, as far as how pervasive or how pervasive the spread is in the city. So that would be the data update. I'm happy to say that the 30 and under group increased by 7%, and the 31 to 50 decreased by 7%. The increase in that age group had to do with an institution of higher learning where there was a number of clusters or a cluster that we are still working with and still following. So that's pretty much it. I mean, certainly, again, I would invite you to go to the website. The travel advisory, as you know, is an advisory now. It is not, it is not a mandate. And so they are recommending a 10-day quarantine after travel. They are not mandating a 10-day quarantine after travel. The except individuals who have been gone out of the city or the state, I'm sorry, for less than 24 hours, or if you are fully vaccinated, those are the two exceptions around the travel advisory. Also, yesterday, the Commonwealth has gone into another category of Phase 2 for restaurant workers, grocery or convenience store workers, food pantry workers, medical supply chain workers, vaccine development worker, public works, water, wastewater, or utilities sanitation workers, court systems workers, judges, prosecutors, defense attorneys, clerks, funeral directors, and funeral workers. We're still following up in the department on the number of cases that we have. Tracing and quarantine and isolation and follow-up is still something that we are doing at the department. We had a COVID-19 clinic today at St. John's Congregational Church. We vaccinated 210 individuals today. It went well. And we are looking forward to going to Southend Community Center on Thursday, and then on to Herena on Friday. It has been, we have gotten full support initially. The links for those sites, St. John's link was sent to St. John's Congregational Church and churches. And while I'm saying that, let me say that backforce, we will be standing up one day for the faith community. So there will be a Houses of Worship Day for all Houses of Worship. We wanted, St. John's really was about being in the Mason Square community, and that worked well because we were able to get individuals in that clinic that were from that neighborhood and from that community. So that's really important. Again, we will be at Southend on Thursday, and then on Friday, we will be at Herena. The moving forward is the city of Springfield will be receiving 800 doses every week, as long as we can get those doses in arms within 10 days of receiving the doses and close those cases. So that means that once I receive that 800 dose, within 10 days, they have got to, they've got to be in arms. The teachers, as you know, have their own isolated days. They're shutting down the mass vaccination sites for teachers only, March 27th, April 3rd, April 10th, and April 11th. Individuals will be able to go to the Eastfield Mall, who are teachers, or school workers. Doesn't matter if you are an educator or teaching in a classroom. Anyone who works in the school system will be able to get vaccinated on one of those four days. The plan moving forward, so while this week, the links were shared, and if there is appointments left on any of the links, they will go up on the city's website. But I wanted to give the neighborhoods the opportunity to register the people that they seem at highest risk, and that is what they are doing right now. But if there be any appointments not, you know, taken, we will share that link so that people across the city will be able to take advantage. But remember, these are social equity doses. So that means we want to be real targeted about who we are reaching out to. So that is the update. Next, the setting up the future clinic. So right now, we know that potentially we will be two days a week at the Ray Jordan Center, Tuesday and Thursday. Friday, BHN has taken on that responsibility. So every Friday from 10 to 6, that link is already up on the city's website if you have people who want to register. Springfield Public Schools will be standing up sites, I believe, every Saturday. We're still working the dates out, but I believe it will be every Saturday. And that, the only thing we have to do with that, the Executive Committee of the School Committee has to approve that. The union has already approved. So we feel like we're in a pretty good space to say that Springfield Public Schools will be at Boland every Saturday from, I believe, we're going to do nine to one clinic from 8 to 12:30. We will also be standing up a clinic at Mason Square Health Center that we will staff because although we're going to use their facility, they want us to staff that clinic. So their medical director I'm working with right now, Brightwood Riverview Health Center, we will stand up as well, and that will be on Thursday evening. And again, our staff will have to people that they will allow us to be in the building. When we go live publicly, which is the 17th, I believe it's the 19th actually, but when we go live for all residents, then we will stand up clinics at the Greek Cultural Center. They have great space that we know we can use and stay there. Now, the clinics I'm giving you now are permanent sites that we will keep for almost at least three months. I'm saying June 30th, but at least three months. So the Greek Cultural Center is one. And then WJC Williams Center is another one that we will potentially be standing up. We are working with them now to make sure that we are able to use that facility as we need to. But that will be another site. Curative, I'm working with them right now. They're going to stand up an additional site in Springfield, not using our doses, but they're using their own doses. And they're talking about, and I don't know this place, so we're going to go up and take a look, but it's, I think they said Home City Housing. It's on the corner of Bay and Oak Grove. They are going to stand up a site there. Again, they won't be using the city's doses. They'll be using ours. I mean, they won't be, they'll be using theirs. We are also elder affairs in the libraries continue to take calls to register our residents. We sent out a press release about that, so I'm looking forward to continuing. Our staff is looking forward at the libraries and elder affairs continuing to help our residents register. So that's where we are right now. That is my update, counselors. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. A fantastic update and really welcome news. I want to commend you, Commissioner. I know many months, several months ago, you know, we asked what the major barrier was to localize vaccine, and you made clear it was doses. And you have gotten those doses and followed through on setting up these clinics. Are there any questions for the Commissioner on her update? Feel free to jump in, or I see Counsel Whitfield has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, fantastic update as usual, so thorough as usual. Getting updates from you is always what we need. I just don't know how you do it. I say it every week, you just never cease to amaze me. I have a couple of questions. The first one, the three cases of the variant, do we know if the vaccine that's currently out will prevent it, so to speak? Does it work on that variant as well?
They are saying that the current vaccines, the mRNA vaccines, do have some efficacy as far as that variant is concerned. I do not know about Jensen or J&amp;J, but there's some belief that Pfizer and Moderna do, has some effectiveness against that variant. But, you know, again, we have not done longitudinal studies around this vaccine. And so when they tested it, that is the feedback that we're getting, Counselor.
Okay, that's, I guess, good news. Do we have Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine now?
We do not yet. There are many individuals in our city that I'm talking to because it's one and done, are interested in the Johnson vaccine. Last week, they sent 8,000 doses, which was, you know, obviously poultry. And so I'm not sure where they went, but as they get more J&amp;J, they will be sending it to us.
Okay, perfect. And then you mentioned that the Ray Jordan Center is open on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Do we have a time for that one yet?
Yes, we will initially, what I, so one of the days, and the Thursday, April 1st, will be a morning clinic. But I believe that we need to, on Tuesday, potentially think about setting up an evening clinic at Ray Jordan. So I know the first one will be a 9 to 12:30 time slot, but when we move to Thursday, it will either be 9 to 12:30. Now, remember, even though Bay State is, you know, letting us use their place, we have to use our staff. So I just need to make sure that I have staffing in place, and we're working on that now. But Thursday, April 1st, will be from 9 to 12:30.
Perfect. And you are hiring for, for some type of health? Is that?
Yes, I am bringing back one of the women who I absolutely just admire so much. I worked with her for a number of years. Betty Anderson Frederick was my deputy at the department for, for at least over 20 years. And she also worked at, was one of the primary nurses who founded the Mason Square Neighborhood Health Center back in 1973. She was my first boss, and I just, I called and I said, "I need a incident commander and a clinic manager to work with our staff." So she's coming back. There will also be nurses and other staff that we will bring on in order to staff these clinics, so that our staff doesn't suffer from burnout.
Exactly. I appreciate that. Okay, I think that that's all that I have. Thank you for your time and all the information as usual.
Certainly.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield, Counsel Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. Thank you again, as always, for the update. A couple of questions, just so I understand it. What are the clinics that folks can just sign up for? When are they happening? Not the ones that, that, you know, people are doing their own outreach to, like the St. John's of the world, and I think you said one at Herena School. What are the ones that I can just say, hey, if you're interested in signing up, you live in these communities, go here. Which ones are those, and when are they taking place, and are they clearly spelled out on the website?
Thank you. That's an excellent question, Counselor Hurst. So the three clinics, the Ray Jordan, the St. John's and Herena, I'm sorry, the St. John's, Herena, and St. John's, Herena, oh, Southend Community Center. Those were specific clinics set up for those specific outreach. But on the city's website right now is the Behavioral Health Network link. They can go there and register. Every link from now on will be on the city's website. So you will not have to, there will not be this confusion that happens this week potentially around who has the link, who has access. The state, the Commonwealth, wanted us to penetrate the, those neighborhoods where those clinics are now and make sure we were reaching out to neighborhood residents because of the social equity doses. And so that was the thought. But going forward, after this week, after we do these three clinics, we, every link will be up on the website, and our residents who are qualified based on the phase will be able to access them.
So it sounds like the Ray Jordan Center and BHN will be the ones, correct?
And Springfield Public Schools and the Mason Square Health Center.
I got it. So they can go to the Springfield Public, okay, I got you. Okay, Springfield. So anybody can go to the Springfield Public Schools, or that's just teachers?
No, that is, that is, that is going to be a vaccination site. It will not just be for public schools.
Okay, all right. Good to know. So I will be perusing the website to find out. And then I guess my, my last question, Commissioner, and you may or may not be able to answer. Can you help me understand, once somebody has received their two doses of the vaccine or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, and once that two-week waiting period has expired, does that, that means that they can still, they still can contract the virus, correct?
It means that they are, there is a 94% chance that they will not contract the virus. So that the efficacy for Pfizer and Moderna is about 94% each. So there is a 6% chance they will contract the virus. However, it's really important to note that if you're around someone who's fully vaccinated, you don't have to wear a face cover. But we are asking people to, who are fully vaccinated, when they go out in public, because we don't know who's not vaccinated, that they are wearing a face covering. So yeah, there's a 6% chance, based on the data, that you could contract COVID. But if you wear a face covering outside of your environment, then you should continue to wear your face covering.
Got it. So even within that 6%, the symptoms are probably not going to be as severe, even if you do contract it, correct?
That is, that is correct. And so you may get the virus. The goal of all of these is to keep people out of the hospital and keep people from dying. And so that's the goal, and that's what all of them do 100%, is they keep people from getting really sick and they keep people from dying. Doesn't mean they won't contract the virus because they could, but it would, it would not be as severe a reaction, or, you know, as it might be if you weren't unvaccinated.
And then I guess my last question, Mr. Chair, is that if you're in that 6%, then you can still, and you catch the virus, you can still pass the virus on once you have it, even if you're vaccinated. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's what they're saying. They, you know, they're now trying to say through research that the, that having the vaccine may not, you may not be able to pass it on, but that is not concrete yet. I mean, they're still saying that when you get vaccinated, you're protected. It doesn't mean that you cannot shed the virus and infect someone else.
Got it. So I guess my confusion was how we get to herd immunity if you still could contract the virus. But if 94% cannot, are prevented from even contracting the virus, then that makes sense that we can get to our herd immunity. So I got it. Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you as always, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hurst. Any other questions for the Commissioner? Counsel Edwards or Counsel Allen?
No questions here right now, Jesse.
Okay. I just had a couple, Commissioner, clarifications along, similar to Counsel Hurst. So the, I got the Raymond Jordan Center, BHN, the SPS Saturdays is going to exclusively be at Boland? Or are we going to move around?
No, it will be exclusively at Boland. That's where we'll be every Saturday.
Okay. And then April 19, there will be additional permanent sites. They anticipated that being Greek Cultural Center, J.C. Williams, and Curative at Home City Community Center on Bay Street or Bay and Oak Grove.
That's correct. And those sites will stand up permanently. We know that once the general public is eligible, we need to expand our capacity.
And for the Curative site at Home City, and I'm familiar with that because that's where the Bay Area Neighborhood Council meets, it's a decent-sized space. It has been renovated by Home City. It's a nice space. I think the only concern there you might find when you go and walk it is the parking, you know, probably beyond the street. So you might need some traffic control there. But it is in the heart of the neighborhood, so I think it's valuable. At that site, since it'll be the Curative doses, though, will it still be Springfield only?
It will. I have negotiated that with Dr. Sly Douglas, who is the medical person who is working with that. I will bring closure to that with DPH. I have a Zoom call with Curative DPH tomorrow at 4 o'clock. So I will definitely know the parameters of, you know, who is going to be vaccinated. The only thing I know is that they will not use our doses, and they should be Springfield residents. I don't have a time for you right now, but hopefully tomorrow afternoon, I'll be able to bring some closure to that.
Okay, perfect. And for the other sites in the, before April 19, those sites are open only to Springfield residents, but in any zip code or in specific zip codes?
Those, the social justice doses were very specific for where we saw the highest case rates. But they will be open to any Springfield resident as long as they meet the phase criteria.
Okay. All right. And then just two more questions not related to vaccine, which was with our downgrade to yellow, someone had asked me about the capacity limits. Have the capacity limits for businesses or personal gatherings changed at all?
No, because most of the, much of the Commonwealth was yellow. And so those guidelines that the governor has stood up around the 150 indoor capacity, you know, on the 22nd, I believe that moved to 500 outdoors and 150 indoors. That hasn't changed with us going to yellow. There's nothing that we gained by going to yellow because the governor had already moved on increasing indoor capacity, and restaurants can stay open as long as they do the social distancing at full capacity and face covering and social distancing, so and hand washing. So nothing has really changed for us being yellow, except that we're going in a better direction.
Okay. And then on contact tracing, we are still contact tracing based on DPH reports in Springfield, correct?
That's correct. So as you know, we, we receive the reports daily with the case numbers, and then our staff, working with the Contact Tracing Collaborative at the Commonwealth, at the state level, still do contact tracing, and we will continue to do that. And that's why it was important to bring on other staff because our staff is really kind of straight out as far as doing that work is concerned.
I understand. And do we get, the hospitals, when they're testing their staff, do they report those to us to contact trace, or do they contact trace those themselves?
They report them to DPH and DPH filters and gets it to whatever city in town is the resident of that individual or that hospital. If you're talking about the people who work there, then, you know, they send it to that local board of health. But everybody reports to the state, and then the state does the filtering and sends us the cases relevant to our jurisdiction.
Thank you so much. And I see Counsel Whitfield and Counsel Hurst had additional questions. Oh, go Counsel Whitfield and Counsel Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only question was for the Curative ones at Home City Development. Do folks still go to the website for those as well, or call like the libraries or Ray Jordan Center? Is it the same process?
Excellent question. So your question is an excellent one that I don't have closure to, but I will tomorrow at 4 o'clock, which is, where can we access their link? Do we have to go? Will they, I don't think they'll have a problem putting it up on the city's website, but I can definitely tell you that at this moment, but I will certainly be pushing for that. And I think they'll be fine with it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
If you go to the state website now, the mass vaccine signup, I know the pre-registration doesn't, only applies to mass vax, but if you go to the state website and just search for locations, will the cities, will the city spots come up? Because it's all the same system.
Well, that's, that's an excellent question. And what I have done, or I have asked my staff to do is to make our clinics private. If our clinics are private, that means that only Springfield residents have access to those links. If they're public links, that means that they go on the state's website, and anybody can register. So we've tried to make sure those links stayed private so we could control and make sure that they were city residents.
Okay, so they go to our website to find those?
They go to our website. And again, for people who don't have access to, are impacted by the digital divide, then we, obviously, the elder affairs and the libraries and everybody will be registering, and we will continue to make that statement. I asked Bill Baker to put it out again today. I just want to make sure people know that they can access those links, you know, if they don't have a computer, that they can call those numbers.
For certain. Counselor Hurst, I apologize. Go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
No, yeah. Sorry, two more questions, Commissioner. If people have already had COVID-19, are they susceptible to getting that same variant again?
What I, what, what the research is saying, that if people have been, had COVID-19, obviously, after 90 days, they can be vaccinated. So we encourage people who have had the virus. And so your question is, can they be reinfected? Yes, there are cases in the nation where individuals have been reinfected with COVID-19 after having the virus. And so that's why we do ask people to wait 90 days, but we do ask after an infection, and then we ask them to be vaccinated. but we do ask in after an infection and then we ask them to be vaccinated.
So the ninety-day waiting period is because they've developed some sort of immunity? Is that, is that what you're saying? Is that why?
Yeah, the ninety-day waiting period is so that there's no antibody impact. So we know that after, or they know, that after ninety days, we, we believe that the antibody protection is pretty much dissipated. And so if you think of it as almost like having a booster, you've had some antibodies because you had the virus, but you need another dose to make sure that it's effective. So we wait those ninety days and we ask individuals to do the two doses, but that's the reason for the, the ninety days.
Got it, thank you. And then my last question is, can you just speak to this fourth wave? And also take into consideration the fact that, that we've relaxed some of the restrictions here in masks? Do you anticipate that? What are your thoughts on it? Are you concerned?
Yes, I think all of us are concerned about a potential fourth wave. I don't, I personally think that we will get through the summer months unless the new variant takes off in, in, in our area. Because we will, as you know, be going into warmer weather. People will be going outside. And so I think that for these months, we're going to continue to see good trends. But if that, if new variants, and there are four of them, take hold, then we're going to see an increase, obviously, in the cases. I, I get concerned when I look on TV and see the, what's happening in Florida and folks are having, and I, quite frankly, I'm jealous because I want to be out there partying too. But I'm scared, you know? I'm at the age where I'm not, you know, if I get, if I get COVID, it may not be a good look for me. So I won't be partying right now, but I'm jealous. And so, you know, you see these young folks having a great time and that's a real concern. You know that those variants could spread. Then they're talking about the New York variant. New York is very close to us, right? So yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of concern. I mean, I'm not, you know, I, I can't speak to the infectious disease pieces of it. We'll know that as we go on. But I think all of us still need to be very, very vigilant around this, this virus.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Good questions. And Commissioner, just one, just a couple more. I apologize as they come. We're giving Moderna, is, are those the doses we've gotten, our Moderna?
Currently, yes.
And are we booking people for their second shot when they get their first shot? Or how are we handling the second shot?
Well, there are two ways we're doing it. Some individuals we can book and some we are telling them that we will be in touch. So for Moderna, it's twenty-eight days. So we tell them we'll be in touch and give them a date. So for example, those individuals who we previously vaccinated, their date is coming up on March thirtieth. And our staff has gone in, found every one of them to make sure they got a telephone call or an email so that they know that they can come in. The Springfield Housing Authority, their date is April eighth. We went in and notified them and of course their staff notified them as well. So it does happen two days. Many times we can't give a concrete date, Counselor, because for example, I'll be bringing folks back to the Ray Jordan Center on April first, but I'm not, I was not sure about the concrete time, but I can tell them the date. I can't tell them the time, which is what we've been doing with people.
So when we get the eight hundred doses, say twenty-eight days from now, we're going to be getting, say we still are getting eight hundred doses. That week though, will those eight hundred doses have to go to second shots? Or will we get sixteen hundred doses? So we can do eight hundred first shots and eight hundred second shots?
It's my understanding it will be eight hundred doses every day. And we have asked that question. For, for example, we did the three hundred, two hundred and seventy Housing Authority people. They're sending us another two hundred and seventy for those people. So your question is a good one, whether or not they will increase our dose by, doses by the eight hundred in order to give that, which would make it a sixteen hundred dose. And there's also a question about whether or not, from a staffing perspective, we can handle sixteen hundred doses every single week. And so I need to think about that as well. But I was, my understanding that the eight hundred doses would include the second doses. But that's an excellent question. I've asked that question, that's what I've been told, but I'll continue to follow up.
Okay, and on that note, Commissioner, my, my final question. We had spoken a couple of months ago when we had the first clinics that had opened, first responders about if counselors wanted to volunteer to assist with any operations at a clinic for a day, obviously not medical operations, but, or simply wanted to visit. I just wanted to see was volunteers still a need that you had? Or if counselors didn't want to see any of the clinics, should they contact you directly? Or how would you like to handle that?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd appreciate being contacted directly. I do have an operations committee on Vax Force who is helping to fill some slots for me right now. That's Dr. McAdoo, Dr. Madison, Damaris Jones. Those individuals are working. Dr. Scavren and Dr. Balder have been instrumental in helping me get the Mason Square sites. But we would love to have additional hands because we always need them. There, even if it's just, you know, temp- doing the temperature check, signing people in, doing the registration. Those things are very important. So if counselors are interested, they certainly should reach out to me directly. And I'm happy to facilitate a slot at one of the clinics you might be interested in.
All right, we will pass that along. I'm a, I'm a big fan of elected officials getting out there and, and seeing what's going on for themselves and helping. But I'm not a fan of them getting in the way. So I just want to make sure that we don't interrupt your operations at all. So Commissioner, as always, thank you so much. That's all. I don't think there are any more questions, but certainly if you have anything else, we welcome you.
Do you mind if I leave this meeting at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, and so at this time, we do have Finance Department here. Lindsay, Melanie, if there's anything, any updates you would like to share for you, please feel free.
Sure, I can just share the updated revenue numbers this week. Thirty-seventh week in the fiscal year. So as you know, we've talked before, F Y twenty saw a decrease in four point nine million dollar in variable revenue streams. Tracking for F Y twenty-one, we added an additional three point six million, which brings our total revenue declines from the beginning of the pandemic to eight point five million in variable revenue. We did see an uptick this week in collection of motor vehicle excise taxes over last week, so that's good. And then I believe really this is like the last week of tracking revenues against the previous year before COVID started. So I think going forward, we're going to be comparing revenue collection against F Y nineteen. Just so we can continue to kind of see how we're tracking against a regular year of revenue collection. Since obviously last year at this time is not a regular year of revenue collection.
And I can report on the COVID spending and grants. And so for our COVID spending, like to date spending, so from the beginning of the pandemic through end of last week, the city has spent thirty-four point seven million dollars on COVID-related expenses. This is including the school department as well as all the city departments. Of that amount, about twenty-four percent of that is being charged to the fund nineteen oh five, the deficit spending account that we've mentioned before. And the remaining seventy-five percent has been charged directly to grants. And so that's what we have to update right now with regards to spending. With regards to grants, to date, we have about fifty-three point three million dollars worth of grants that have been awarded to the city are COVID-related. And of that amount, we have spent almost half so far.
Have we gotten any new information on the regulations around the rescue plan revenue? I know we went over that, I think, last week. So I'm not expecting we have, but if we have.
We haven't, we haven't. Yeah, sorry, sorry, Melanie.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely waiting. I was just on a call with the state today. They had nothing new to report outside of what we already know. So we're still waiting.
Okay, I did, I see Counselor Whitfield has a, has a question to recognize her. And also I did, as we talked about, last week I spoke with Counselor Whitfield about when we do have those regulations, having a joint finance and, and COVID nineteen meeting on that. So Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Lindsay and Melanie. I just wanted to ask, what is the non-COVID related expenditures? Do you have that number?
Uh, like just basically our general fund expenses that are COVID, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Um, I don't have a, like, oh, up to deep from as of last Friday, but I could certainly get that to you.
Yeah, I, I would probably, Tracy, I would refer to, and we can send this to you, to Pat Burns's monthly revenue and expense report is probably the best place to look. Because he keeps track, well, that, that report keeps track of, obviously, total expenses and revenue compared to the previous year. But then it also tells you how we're tracking against, you know, the percentage spent based on where we are in the year two.
Okay, so that report does not include the COVID numbers that you just gave us. So that's, okay, so I wasn't clear on that. And then usually there's like a surplus there and he always says, because we haven't had the month where this happened or this happened or this happened. So, okay, all right.
Yeah, and, and just so you're aware, COVID expenses are completely separate from the general fund. So general fund, the report that he has is just general fund.
General fund, okay.
Yep.
That's perfect. And I just wanted to say that the explanation that you all gave about the, what was it, Tim? The retirement. I, I wish more of the counselors would have came to understand because you broke it down to me, Lindsay, when you said we have to find that money. That's what the budget department is here for. And I'm like, you're right, that's, that's what I used to do. And, but, but thank you. That was, I, I, I appreciate Tim having that meeting. I wish I could have stayed to the end because it really was kind of like an eye-opener. I mean, I've heard it so many times before, but I never really heard it, if you understand. I never really listened, I guess, because it was never explained before like it was on that meeting. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Yeah, and thanks for having that meeting, Counselor Whitfield. And I will say it's not an easy topic to understand. And it's really alarming and scary if you just look kind of like at, you know, bullet points that go out there sometimes. But when you sit down and you go through it, like we were able to do in the Finance Subcommittee meeting the other day, you can see there is a plan in place, even though, you know, it's painful and, but we do have a plan. So thank you for having that meeting so we could talk about that.
Well, Tim really organized and orchestrated it because he's on that. I think you're on that Retirement Board or Committee, Tim, but it was just great to like hear it like that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not on the board, Tracy. Pat Burns is the, is on the board with four other people. But I've been plugged into it for so long that Pat and I, and Pat invited me to, I go to the thing once in a while and I saw that presentation before. So after that, we talked and decided it would be a good thing to, for everybody to see. And, and you can't get it all at once. I mean, it's been
It's a lot.
Six or eight or ten years for me. The, the, the hard part to understand, the hardest part to swallow is that every year it goes up four million or thereabouts. So, you know, it just, it's kind of just have to swallow it and, and figure out how you're going to do it. And the number now, like fifty million from the city side, we're in that range now. I think we're forty-seven and we're going to be fifty-one. I mean, it was thirty when we started looking at this thing. So it, it just continues to go up. So that's partly why our budget goes up. You see the budget number, a lot of it is right, right, tied right back to the pension.
And sorry, Counselor Letterman, I know this is in the finance meeting. I just wanted to get a understanding of the difference between the COVID spending. Like, I'm confused every time. But now, like every time you have your meetings and they report out and then we have ours, it gets clearer and clearer. So thank you for the opportunity to say that. And I just did want to thank them because I didn't, I had to leave early on the finance meeting, so I wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, not a problem. And we know if Counselor Allen had his way, every, every meeting would be on the pension and probably it should be. So thank you all. Are there any other questions for the finance team? And seeing, seeing none, I, I thank everybody for their attendance today. Again, just a reminder, if there's any topic in particular folks would like to cover, just let me know. And we can arrange for guests or testimony. And I'll just share one other additional piece with, with the counselors present. I should have said this when the Commissioner was on. I was doing an interview earlier today about the one year into the pandemic from a local government perspective. And I recounted a conversation that I had with the Commissioner at our last, very last in-person meeting when we were spaced out and we didn't know we were supposed to wear masks yet. And I said to her, and it was when we were being told, if we laid low for two weeks, we would be, be ready to come back. And I remember saying to the Commissioner, do you think after the initial two weeks, we will, that there will be another wave? And she looked at me and she said, I do. And here we are a year, a year later. So thanks, everybody, for, for hanging in there, continuing the work in, in everybody's own individual way and collectively. And I will see everybody next week at four thirty.
And I'm glad that the finance team is dominated by women on this meeting during national, when the international women's, so I always had to throw international women
Us too.
On every meeting, Counselor Letterman, so while, while we still can.
Yes, me and Counselor Whitfield, absolutely. And we're very lucky to have, very lucky to have both members of the finance team and yourself.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Holton Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
I see that smirk, Counselor Edwards.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.